Six o'clock, so I'll call to order this January thirteenth meeting of Lawrence County Council. As we have a new council being sworn in, the first item of business is for the election of officers. For chairman and vice chairman, so at this time I'll open up nominations for chair.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, I move that we nominate Jeffrey Carroll, Chair.
Second.
Third.
Mr. Carroll has been nominated, are there any other nominations? Any nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Now vote for chairman, all in favor of Jeff Carroll to serve as chairman of Lawrence County Council, please indicate by raising your hand. Six, sir. Congratulations.
What's that, six zero?
Seven zero, I'm assuming you're ready for something. Okay, at this time I'll open up nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination.
I'd make nomination. Mr. Patterson?
I believe many will view this person not having enough experience and still new to council. And needs more time to learn, I believe, however, that they have shown great leadership already, not only in their elected duties. But in their past community involvement, are more than capable than serving as vice chair of Lawrence County Council, so it would be a great pleasure. That I nominate Reverend Shirley Clark as the next vice chair of Lawrence County Council. Ms. Clark has had time, has time and time again shown her dedication to her citizens and her employees. Ms. Clark holds regular community cleanups where she puts boots on the ground and works for her constituents to clean up areas throughout the District Three. Most recently during the hurricane, Ms. Clark was one of the most active council members and responded to the needs of Lawrence County citizens and the perfect fonder. She was up at DFC doing anything and everything. Needed, whether that was preparing food for first responders, grilling hamburgers, making sure everyone was fed. Working outside, do it from outside here handing out tarts and MREs to folks in the National Guard line or delivering water bottles down the community. She was a constant during the entire emergency and did all of this with selfless service, her power was all for well over the week and for many others who had theirs before. The dedication she is showing not only to the staff and the citizens of both great counties unmatched, she is constantly striving not only at the South Carolina Association level. But at the NACO level, paying for education on leadership and service to the people. Anytime there's an opportunity to learn more about serving as a council member, she is taking advantage of it, gaining knowledge and applying it in the exercise of her duties. I'm extremely proud to nominate Ms. Clark. Who has proven herself not only at this table but throughout her community, I think she will make a fantastic last year.
Patterson, Mrs. Clark is going to nominate, are there any other nominations?
Matthew Brownlee. I nominate him, sir.
Matthew Brownlee has been nominated, are there any other nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and we will vote. All those in favor of Shirley Clark for vice chair, please indicate by raising your hand. All those in favor of Matthew Brownlee, please indicate by raising your hand. Vote is, five votes for Matthew Brownlee, two votes for Shirley Clark. Congratulations, Mr. Brownlee, you're the vice chair. This time I will turn the meeting over to newly let me chair Mr. Carroll and you guys can shuffle seats.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that. I don't know exactly how you want to shuffle seats yet, is everybody comfortable just having this meeting as we're sitting here? Y'all should change, hey there. I don't even think we have anything on there but our district, okay? So if everybody's good with that, we'll just, we'll just sit as we are and we'll go ahead and get this meeting done and then we'll point out that we need to change, sir. But the thousand need to go to end. And five champion check aside too, sir. Absolutely, we can, we can clear that up, okay? Would you like to sit? Your vice chair? You're fine, how we're going, okay, so let's just continue on this way. I want to thank everybody's vote of support and I hope to be a chairman that you can be proud of. That we have a great year as a new council, that we have remarkable accomplishments. Solidify public trust back in Lawrence County, not that it's not, but that we solidify that trust. And that we advance Lawrence County over these next two years. So now we've asked Ms. Clark if she would offer our invocation and then our pledge of allegiance.
End this meeting tonight. As we gather here in the new year of this twenty twenty five year. I ask you to give us wisdom, give us the knowledge, give us understanding, help us with godness. As we deliberate on items before us, help us to make the wise decision and the right decision. I just pray for Lawrence County, that it benefits for Lawrence County and for your glory in heaven, Father. Oh Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name. May we be true to the responsibility that you entrust in us. May our ability measure up to the issues that come before us. Help us, help us, Lord God, with the work that we, that is presented before us. Give us the insight without oversight. Give us the discernment without extortion. Give us fairness without favoritism. Give us the strength to stand even if we stand alone. For the better if we fall, let's fall for righteousness and win for the wrong doing. Guide us in this meeting and always, and help us to remind us that we here to do a service for Lawrence County. We ask you to be with each and every last one of us and their families, Lord God. Father God, I ask thank you for all the many blessings and that you have grown upon our life, Lord God. Father God, I ask you that you review and remind us that what we say and do here, that will be reviewed in your sight in the last days to come. Bless everyone and their family, this I pray in Jesus' name. Let the people of God say amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since evening we can approve of our agenda, January thirteenth, until you hand this in your package. I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Most probably.
Second, any discussion? If not, the agenda will stand as, all those in favor, thank you. The agenda will stand as clear. Need to approve our minutes of the December ninth, twenty twenty four meeting, in your new package as well. Somebody's ready, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Awesome?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, add for them, right here. Mr. Hicks, do you have any reports to councils?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
You will, Mr. Chairman, have any public comments on us? So there were two sheets, one was a public hearing sign in sheet and one was a public comments sheet, so we'll assume that. Maybe we'll ask everybody to have public comment first before the public hearing sheet. Mike Sagmiller, is that correct?
Yes.
You like that?
Yes, sir.
Evening, Councilman.
Evening, sir.
Thank you for your patience to speak tonight. Once again, my name is Mike Saggar, with the Green Ball and Fire Department. I came here tonight not only to make factual comments, but to inform and bring awareness to the citizens of Lawrence County. On two important topics within the county's volunteer fire system. The first topic is safety with a lack of. I'm here to bring light to areas of safety in the volunteer system that have been overlooked in this county. Safety of our citizens, your families, your homes are important. We are living in the present, not in the past, and desperately need to update all of our systems moving forward. The second topic will involve taxes, not state and federal, but our local taxes, which we all contribute to. I'm sure that everyone will agree, that we all work hard for money, and there are taxes. Shouldn't you pay them to improve the safety of the county? Well, the volunteer departments, aid departments will not be sent previously or unchecked. Before I go any further, a little background on some of these issues in time constraints. I moved here several, several years ago, living in Green Ball and Fire Department. And before then, I had looked into the volunteer fire station. Because I came from a aid department myself, I did forty years of service in a fire service career, as well as volunteer service. And when I came here, I was looking to help the community out, volunteer in my service, and help in any way I could. And moving forward, the Green Ball and Fire Department, which is closest to myself, my family. I had did meet with them before I even moved here and seen the problems they were facing here, back in the years. Any equipment, utilities, and what they had, especially manpower, it's always a big problem. As I came up here every year, before I moved here, I would bring them supplies from my county. Because we had extra stuff all the time, so I donated those items to the county, Lawrence County. And got to meet some of the chief and some of the people there. As I moved here and got established. I really seen the problems within the fire service, my family lives here, my dad became very sick. And was very ill, and every time you called for fire department or emergency services, the rescue truck. A bunch of volunteers would show up in shorts, t-shirts, drinking water, and they would just sit over my dad and look at him. They didn't do anything for him, they just sat there and looked, they had no experience, no bags, no nothing. Until the road rescue team, with the team of paramedics, that took care of him. So after that, I decided to join the volunteer fire department. I met with the chief there, gave him all my certifications, which were many. And they accepted me in the fire department, and hey, this guy has a lot, we could use you. I'm available twenty-four seven, so I said, I'm a good asset, I'm like a couple miles from the station. So I got involved, and doing so, I was involved in ear checks, FBA checks, some of their training, hose testing. That was one of my fortades in my field, and asthma. Throughout those years, I moved up a little bit and became a training officer there, and started training them. And that none of them really knew exactly what to do, they didn't have the training, they had nobody there to teach them. So I started teaching them. When it got to a point where I was getting a little too much, some of the guys were not happy with what was going on, that I was changing some things. And I was called a good old boy, we don't like good old boys, and was kicked out. Was thrown out of the station by the chief, volunteer chief, kicked me out. Not only did they kick me out, they also threatened me for jail time, but in return some of the records that I had, that I had kept my personal self about the training within the departments. Which I thought was crazy, never seen anything like it in my years of service. At that point, I started moving forward again, and I didn't stop, not a stopper, kept trying to volunteer my services. I did meet with some of the council members at one point in time, some of them are not here at this time, been removed. And that two fell on deaf ears, they said, yeah, Mike, we need you, we can get you in here somewhere, never heard anything back, fell on deaf ears. So I proceeded on and talked to county administrator. Spent many hours of my own time coming up here, meeting with him in his office. I even wrote two papers on volunteer safety and awareness, that I was going to take my own time, go out of the county. Get this information, help the county move forward in a positive light, because the community definitely needs it. There is inability within our communities, and when your children are sick, when you're hurt, you need somebody there in an instant. Not somebody there that does not know what they're doing, doesn't know what an air pack from an O2 tank, it's incredible, but I've seen it. So moving forward from this point on, as I go back to the front, I talked about bringing more and more light into this. Agenda in this arena. I'm not going to take much time tonight to go through that, I just wanted to hit on the highlights, but I will be back. Next meeting, I will be back with lots and lots of information to move forward. I have plenty of it to show, to share, moving forward, and maybe we can change something in the future. But also, just so people do understand that it's not just a complaint of myself. There are other citizens that I have talked to within the communities, but it's also with anybody that is OSHA. Big Branch Occupational State Health Administration, they are also looking into the.
Yeah, I'm not trying to step on you, but we have constraints.
Okay, but.
You wrap up.
But OSHA is coming down, looking at the volunteer systems also, within the whole state and other cities, moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, bless you, sir.
Welcome to Lawrence County, this is how it operates.
Reverend Kennedy, were you wanting to speak on public comment or at public hearing coordinates nine seventy-seven?
Whatever.
Okay, just making sure.
First, I want to give honor to God who created us, all of us. And I want to welcome the new council people on the council. We need you, but we need you to do the right thing. A few days ago, we saw an insulting moment. And I'm afraid we can overcome it, but the denial of honoring the people's vote. But I want to give a good shout out to the Lawrence County Election Commission. For listening to this officer, Philson, straight. And granting him the right, when he should have been sworn in on Tuesday night with the other types of people. In America, you're supposed to be innocent until proven guilty. No one has the right, not even a jury, to commit an hateful act on Mr. Philson and his wife. We've been knowing him a long time, we also know where he lives. And he's a thirty-eight year veteran. He knows how to live in the wild. He knows how to live in the woods. He did it because he was trained by the United States government, where he served with many honors. I want to congratulate all the new winners, and also want to say to the old ones here. Work in unity, the scripture teaches us this, oh how blessed it is, when the brethren and I add assistance to. I may have wrote the Bible, they just didn't recognize the women, but I know Jesus Christ will, hallelujah there. Because it was through a woman, the Savior was born on earth, let's remember that. We can make this county something different from the redneck shop. A symbol of hatred, but we have to learn to love each other. I happened to serve two capacities, one as pastor of New Beginning Missionaries back at the church. And when they were throwing rats, dead, snakes, dead, raining out all over the windows, we couldn't get any help from anybody. Putting Confederate stickers and Nazi stickers on our door, we couldn't get any help. A slave found it, told me, it was Sam Dawson, who sent a crew in with ABC brand tablet. They found out that even a young man who was here, had planned to assassinate me, and we couldn't get any help from anybody. I'm here to cheer you on, trust me, have the Lawrence County branch of the NAACP, and I want you to understand one thing. The NAACP, according to Dr. Robert Bricebain, Professor at Millhouse College, wrote a book called The Black Vanguard. And I challenge anybody of any race, he said, NAACP had its inception by white people. They started the NAACP to help black people stand up for their rights. So I want to say hallelujah there to my white brothers and sisters, but we have to come together. When we feed the hungry, I told some of you, we don't, we feed the whole county. Big time every Christmas and every Thanksgiving, and I want to give a shout out and let you all know, Mr. Furman, Furman Ford. Sheriff Body Shop, Ryan Body Shop, Colonel Newberry, Metro Gas Department. I want to give a shout out to a number of people, we too fall into it alone. But whenever we move, every city council and every town and the county. We serve everybody, and I tell them, when you come to the church, I don't care how you look, and I tell my members, this is food like the feedings is a spice. I don't care how you come in here, they ragged their clothes coming, then we advise some new clothes. I said, but we have to treat everybody like they're human. Nobody should feel bad in Lawrence County, but God has given the new council a time to come together, come together. There needs to be forgiveness, hallelujah there, but it needs to be a serious council where, don't be buddy 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 buddy. We have core areas for black, white, Hispanic, every blacks live. Make sure you are spreading your mind to where it is needed. Break up, dig with town, cross here to Waterloo, Mount Villa. Come, they are part, they are part of us, we got to stop the buddy buddy game, and be fair to everybody. We are dependent on you, but more than us, God Almighty watching you. Because he is giving you this opportunity to do the right thing by all people, and stop issuing out every penny to your buddies and friends. Looking for something in return. I want to thank Sheriff Grills, hallelujah there. For treating us with decency on Tuesday night, I appreciate it. Because he disagree with the judge's opinion, the judge took a hold too, he says duty, you care about his doing too? He didn't care about, but thank God, and I'm thanking God for the Lawrence Election Commission. For doing the right thing instead of humiliating a council member, and his wife, who had nothing to do with it. They got it right, and I want to thank this commission, and I want to thank the sheriff in your definition, sir.
Amen.
Hallelujah there. First thing, the first thing, something like he wanted to do, all police, but thank God. The super sheriff was right on time.
Amen.
I'm saying as I close out, this is your opportunity that God is giving you to do the right thing. Be forgiven, be loving, and make this council what it needs to be, not for your buddy buddy, but for everybody. Because we are with God too, and God is expecting you to pump it up, and so are we. God bless each one of you, I thank you for your opening statement, sir, and with beautiful words. I thank you for the prayer, they were beautiful words, but now may they materialize into decency and respect. To God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Ghost, bless all of you, God bless all of you. Native brother, hallelujah there. Well, bless you.
Oso, oso, you're a lady, good afternoon, good evening. Dog with dog, my name is, the line of gate I would in yellow hall, I know all the stuff, how are you? And one last thing, we believe that everybody is related, we believe that you are our brothers and sisters, so I'd rather let me say. Although I say way pony, I mean all of my brothers and sisters are doing well, and Ski, thank you. Thank you for the opportunities you've given us, thank you for what you've done here, it's a try, I appreciate it. I have to introduce myself in the native language, because I picture the ask for something. Something for the county to think about, I know this is only a long-term project if it happens. But I just want to remind Lawrence County and Lawrence County Council, that ninety-six has a place behind their building that's a three and a half mile. Prairie path walk where the Cherokee's walked, and this park is set aside for anybody who wants to go up there. We've spent many, many years walking that path, it's where we traded goods and stuff with other people. They got a marker that states it's Cherokee. The other thing is, is ninety-six, I mean, it's six mile, six miles. Is, we did a walk there one time, because the Trail of Tears went down Main Street, six miles. Those are very important things. But there's nothing, to me, there's nothing bigger and stronger and more powerful in Lawrence County. Because the Cherokee Indians was the first people to inhabit this state in the sixteen hundreds. There's nothing that says that anywhere that's not posted, I would like to see some kind of something set up in front of, at the library or in front of a building. An administrative building or something, I'd also like to see our tribal rounds or the honey grounds of Cherokee Indians back in the sixteen, seventeen, eighty hundreds. I'd like to see a mark on Mark there saying that's a historical site.
I know this is a. No more anyway.
It's a thing, we, it took us fourteen, fifteen years to get a statue of a Native American hood at the, at the War of Company in Granville. In, in memory of the Cherokee Indians, they got it in front of the War Department. But, well, that's not having anything here with us being here since the sixteen hundreds, the first people to ever come here. But, but that's not having anything to do with us being here since the sixteen hundreds, the first people there, some here. I'm just hoping that Lawrence County can think about that, e- even though it's gonna be a long term.
Well, it'll be.
Thank you for what you've done for us with our tribe. Uh, y'all helped us a bunch. I appreciate everybody that's done something. Uh, everybody that was involved in actual, uh, we, we made a lot of progress. We still got a long ways to go, a lot to do. I still, as I said, the first time I ever spoke to this thing, years ago, I still believe with all my heart that one day the Lower East and Cherokee Nation of South Carolina will be a tourist in South Carolina. In Lawrence County. And I've talked to some people about it and they're in, we're trying to raise money to get a building. To do that with. But I believe it's gonna work. I have to, Skip, thank you.
I'm letting him up there, sir.
Well, bless you, sir. Hallelujah there.
Uh, we'll move into old business. Currently, if you are a new council member and you have submissions for appointments to your boards and commissions and committees that you're responsible for. You'll get those, Miss Cheyenne, after the meeting, she can get those with Wes to be able to get ready for us to vote on the next time. Existing council members, if there's any opening, opening spots in your council district that you have submission for, let us know now. We'd like to have any. Uh, we'll move to item B, third reading of ordinance nine seventy-three, Project Ponderosa Filo, call on, um, Jonathan Coleman for the L C W's.
Here. Um, this is the third reading, so I think, um. The, uh, the folks that have been here before are familiar with it, with the, with the, with the new folks, um. This is a solar farm project, uh, going on some property, um, off Highway seventy-six between Lawrence and Cleveland. Um, that is being done by Duke Energy. Um, the, uh, Pilo, uh, payments, uh, will be, uh, per years, one through ten will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, eleven through twenty, or two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and then three hundred and twenty-five thousand per year is twenty-one thirty-seven. Those amounts are what they'll pay every year, um, in, in the Pilo payment, which is basically the, the property taxes. So right now the property is classified as agricultural property, is probably paying a few hundred bucks, so, well, so it's, it's a win.
We have a motion to approve on third reading ordinance nine seventy-three.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving on third reading ordinance nine seventy-three. Seven zero. Next item sees third reading ordinance nine seventy-four, which will amend the octagon multi-county industrial park to include Project Ponderosa.
It's, uh, the multi-county industrial park is, uh, just, uh, it's not really a multi-county industrial park, it's just paper, uh. That, uh, it's a technicality, it has to be done for a, for a Fila agreement, so that's just amending that agreement to add this project.
We have a motion for third reading on ordinance nine seventy-four.
So move.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Yeah, we get, sir.
What that will allow is to have them put into an agreement, if you will, of multi-county parks to let them achieve the Fila that we just brought up. Going on the ball. The park is a theoretical, it's not an actual park, but it's a group of businesses that are to, want together to create an industrial park. Any other questions on, on that? If not, all those in favor of approval on third reading ordinance nine seventy-four. Next item, item D is a public hearing, ordinance nine seventy-eight, for Project Portland Filo. At this time, if there's anybody here to speak. Or against ordinance nine seventy-eight, Project Portland Filo, please come forward. Um, is six thirty-four. Being number one, we'll close the public hearing on ordinance nine seventy-eight. Item E, the second reading of ordinance nine seventy-eight, Project Portland Filo. John Nicole.
Yes, sir. Um, this is a company, um, located in the Great Court area, um, on the Front Road. Um, looking to invest, um. Minimum twenty-two million dollars and, uh, create twenty-two jobs.
This is already there, or?
So. Yes and no. There, there's a business on site currently that, I think they're gonna change their name, they're expanding by a lot compared to what they are now, so. Um, if there's a, they're in business on site now, but it might, it'll, it'll be, uh, and they'll go under and manage it and, and a lot there.
So that's up under them. College, M I L O T. Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
You can't tell the name right now.
It's been a program about this.
Okay, they have not disclosed their name yet.
That would be the third reading.
Um. But you said the county that owned the, the land now, or the company on the land?
The company also there, yeah. There is an extension. Technically, it's a new company, but if, if, if you look at it, it's more of an expansion of what's already there, but it's, uh. My name is. Okay.
It's seven, say, company already did. What you saying, it gonna change, hey?
It's a change in name and brand.
We have a motion to approve on second reading, ordinance nine seventy-eight, Project Portland Filo.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any other questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor of approval on second reading, ordinance nine seventy-eight, Project Portland Filo, mentioning. All those pose seven zero. We'll have a public hearing now, item F, for ordinance nine seventy-seven, we're gonna amend the octagon multi-county industrial park to include Project. We'll open public hearing, six thirty-seven four. Being no one for public hearing on ordinance nine seventy-seven, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go into item G, second reading of ordinance nine seventy-seven, to amend the octagon multi-county industrial park to include Project Portland.
Yeah, that's, same thing we just, sir.
I have a motion to approve on second reading, amending, ordinance nine seventy-seven, amending the octagon in, in Seattle. Have a moment.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? We have one item, a new business, I believe Mr. Coleman could stand here for, is item A is approval of a resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five one. To join your agreement for Sunny Days LLC Filo.
Yes, sir. So this is Sunny Days up in, uh. Out in the Great Court area. They have a current Fila, um, they're adding, I think it's their, uh, to the Fila agreement, that's certain thing that we, so they're just adding. Um, a new entity, uh, with their LLC on.
Essentially, there's no change to the Fila.
No term change, no nothing. They're just changing, adding another entity in the Fila agreement everywhere. Their company's name, they'll have, they'll be another.
That's up under that LLC. A motion to approve, resolution twenty twenty-five, to join your agreement for Sunny Days LLC Filo.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one.
Right. A motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Hold up, sorry. What is twenty-five dash one? That's just the first resolution of twenty twenty-five. Year twenty twenty-five, first one we've done this year, our first one. Got you. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, seven zero, approve. Going to county council comment. Uh, the way they seated us this morning, or this evening, uh, was by district, one to seven, so today, um. If you'll allow me to do that, we'll just go by districts this evening before we get, uh. Back into a different order. Next meeting, I'll ask a council one representative to have any council comment. District two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank all of y'all, uh, for trusting me and voting for me as vice chairman. Uh, I'll thank all y'all for coming tonight. It's the most crowded I've seen this room before. Been a long time, you know, this time last year, I was pretty relieved considering whether to run for office or not. It's been a long journey, but I've enjoyed seeing a lot of familiar faces in this room that I've gotten to know this past year. The biggest goal of running was just to make Lawrence County a better place, myself being young. I want the people that I graduated with to come back to this county and live, uh, for Lawrence County to be a place that, you know, people my age and of all ages want to come live, work, play, and pray. That's, you know, above all, uh, just honesty, integrity, and being transparent with the citizens, Lawrence County citizens, there are nothing less. Uh, but I look forward to four years of service on here. I want to thank the people of District two for trusting me, uh, to be your voice, and I look forward to getting to work with all of, all of you. And, uh, I feel like council members, you know, not one person can. Handle the diverse needs of this county. I look forward to working with everybody on this council. You know, at the end of the day, we are seven votes, but a- at the end, we're all one voice. Yes, very, very excited to get to work.
I'd like to say, um, happy new year to all that came out today and congratulations on our new, uh, members and our new chairman, vice chairman, congratulations. Now, I just want to say, um, looking forward to a great year. We're picking our, but we're gonna, gonna make it.
Mission.
Because we have to disagree to agree, so we understand that. We have to do things to make a change, and we've got to come together as one to make these changes.
Those, we are looking for peace and love from the rest of this county. We got to make these, um, our constituents that we represent.
Feel like we are responsible and gonna do fairness and equal to everyone, because we all work. And live right here in Lawrence County. I love Lawrence County. All of us, you all love Lawrence County because you here. And I say thank you both for coming out and supporting. Thank you.
Motion.
Happy new year. I echo that from Ms. Clark, moving forward to serving with new council members and, uh, nice nomination running up for you, but I would just say congratulations on your election chairman and, uh. Appreciate your willingness to serve in that role, but more work.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Pauline Philson Jr. from Lawrence County, District six. Thank you people for putting me in this position. God made it happen. It's not about us, Philson Jr. This is God working. That's why I got to say, I'm here to serve District six. We want to thank some to the Clinton area, the Joanna area, all these other areas. One, two, three, four, five, and six. Our talk, one team, one fight, one team. One team, one team, one fight. Thank y'all. Sorry, my name got centralized in the paper, but my wife, it happened to do with this lesson, and they're like this. All I got to tell people. I'm still gonna fight for District six. And I thank the sheriff, thank all department heads, everybody, and I just thank every department head in Lawrence County to be at our meet. And I just want to thank to the table. If you up and you in the department head, you picture me at the department meet, everything.
I definitely didn't save the best for last, but, uh, uh, but it summed it up pretty well. Um, I am honored to be here and I'm honored to serve my area. I like, I like the coined term that Mr. Philson here has, one team, one fight. Um, I'm bought into that. I urge the rest of council to buy into that. Um. I guess I just hope, I urge the rest of council to just keep in mind that, you know, we are elected by the people, we are serving the people, and that, that's who puts us here, but, uh, they summed it up pretty well.
I feel like I've already spoken, but I will say I'm, I am honored to be able to serve, uh, as chair of this ward, of this committee. And we have a lot of work to do, and I think we're gonna handle it, uh. In a way that you'll be proud, and then we'll get some things done for Lawrence County that need to be done. I think everybody wants the same. We fortunately have no executive session this evening, so with that being said, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
We can fill in charge.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose. We are.
Thank you.